Eighteen to order. Please give me a moment of silence. Please stand for a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
All right, any council comments before we get started with the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Flinger called me a couple of hours ago, said that he had a prior commitment tonight, and with such a short notice, he was not going to be able to make it.
Okay. Anything else from council? Okay. All right, so we've got the first item on the special call agenda is number one, consider signing a surety agreement for the American Merchant wastewater treatment plant staff report.
Counsel, as you all are aware, I've been working since June 6th or 7th to remedy a situation that is hampering American Merchant's ability to begin construction on the wastewater treatment plant at their facility. They applied for a grant through the Appalachian Regional Commission. Actually, the city applied on their behalf. By virtue of the city applying on their behalf, A R C was requiring initially a letter of credit from the city in order to secure the grant award in the amount of $500,000. So let's just go a little history here. I'll point over this way so I don't poke Bill's eyes out. If I can find my...
Appreciate that.
Guess I better turn it on. Um, if you can see here, Prochem submitted a response to a request for proposal, which was a contract for a wastewater treatment facility that had to meet certain requirements to meet American Merchant's demands and also for D E Q demands. So there is a contract that has not yet to be signed between Prochem, Bristol, and American Merchant. I brought this contract to your all's attention probably a couple of three meetings ago. You all gave approval for me to sign that contract, and that contract has language in there that states that the city of Bristol is not liable on any portion of that contract. With that being said, once the A R C awarded the grant, and we had our first initial meeting with them on June 6th or June 7th, I was advised that the city would need to provide a letter of credit in the amount of $500,000. And a letter of credit is technically debt, which I did not want to increase any more debt on behalf of the city. So in order to make this project work, I attempted, our bank provided the letter to A R C, which stated that we have a tan in place in the amount of $2 million, and that we could draw on that tan if we needed to in order to cover that $500,000. American Merchant, or I'm sorry, Appalachian Regional Commission would not agree to use the tan. So then I began working on several different options, and one of those options is what I would consider a performance and payment bond. And working with American Merchant on this, we did secure a bond, which meets the exact language, which is in the grant, that the city of Bristol is the contractor on the project. And you can see here that the city is a contractor. By virtue of the contract with Prochem, I'm also, this is not in the documents you have before you, nor will it ever be, but American Merchant is also one of the contractors due to this contract here. The surety on this performance bond is Travelers Casualty Insurance Company of America, and the owner is the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development, or the Appalachian Regional Commission. So what this does is, in the event that there is a default, and the defaults are, one, that the wastewater treatment plant is never built, or two, 103 jobs are not created by March of 2021. In the event that 103 jobs are not created, or if the plant is not constructed or paid for, that triggers a default by Travelers Insurance. So travelers would then pay $500,000 to V D H C D, which then triggers an indemnification clause that comes back to the city of Bristol in the amount of $500,000. The city of Bristol would then turn around and pay $500,000 back to Travelers Casualty Insurance Company of America. Gene, can you make that a little bit smaller, because there's some things there on the right-hand side? So all this is to benefit, if I'm a, American Merchant. And what we have come to an agreement, American Merchant will allow an increase on the current deed of trust in the amount of $1,090,000 to the benefit of the city. And if this, if any of this over here, if the default occurs, the city would then have the ability to foreclose on the property, or American Merchant would have to pay either $500,000, which might, might be the reason for the trigger of this default, or if they defaulted on the tobacco commission money, they may would have, they might have to pay us back $590,000 in order to keep the property. So all in all, the city has the ability to foreclose on a $1.9 million piece of property. We have a 1.1, roughly a $1.1 million deed of trust on the property, and the city would then own that property if American Merchant chose not to pay those funds back to the city.
Any questions?
Yeah, I've got some questions and some comments. All right. Personally, I had no problem putting the $590 on the deed of trust, because the building is well worth that. Anybody that knows anything about, anything knows that it's worth $590, and we'd get our money back fairly quick. Here's the problem I have with this. The building was sold for $1.9 million, and if this goes through and passes tonight, we're going to be in, with liability on that building of $1,090,000, almost 1.1, you might as well call it 1.1. Here's my reservations and concerns. This city historically does not foreclose on properties in a timely manner. We've never set that precedent. We drag things out and drag things out. Okay? Now here's another thing. Should this default, and we have to pay this back, and they're in half operations, then we have to make a decision to shut that business down to recoup our money. And I don't think that there's anybody on this council that would vote to shut a business down that did not meet its full requirement to recover that money. That would be death by suicide. So I've got major concerns about putting all of this in that building. I made a proposal to you to send back out to them on Tuesday, to put $250,000 on the deed of trust, and put $250,000 cash in reserve in the city drawing interest, and they shot that down. When you crunch the numbers on a $25 million business to potentially a $30 million on the high side of it, we are talking somewhere between 1.8% to a max of 2% of their overall production cost of getting this facility back up and running. And they're not willing to put 250 on the deed of trust and 250 in a separate account in the city drawing interest. That's a red flag to me, because we are talking truly a nickel holding up a dollar here. I was on the phone with the councilman this week, and the comment was made that we're holding this company up. We're not holding them up. $500,000 on a $25 million project, if that holds up somebody, there is something seriously wrong in my mind, and I have not got my head wrapped around it yet. This city has got to get out of the business of financing other industries and endeavors that puts the people on the hook potentially. We have not seen our way clear to $109 million debt, and the, the bill's coming. And if we add this 1.1 to that, we go to $110 million worth of liability. Now, I don't think that the people in this city put me on this council to see our debt and liability increase. And I cannot support this, when we are talking such a small number on American Merchant's end, and a huge liability on ours with the current debt that we have. And I need somebody to help me understand how we, this city, can justify that.
Well, I'm not sure if I can give you a satisfactory answer, to be quite honest. You know, we've discussed this quite a bit over this past week, and I've given as much information as I have to you in regards to this matter. I completely see exactly where you're coming from. Not saying I disagree with it, not saying I agree with it. But what we have here is a company who's decided to make a significant investment in the city of Bristol. They've purchased a building for $1.9 million. They've probably paid out close to $10 million right now in equipment and improvements on that building. So you're looking at basically a $12 million investment at this point. They came to council back in January, asked for permission for us to apply for the A R C grant, which we did, and which was awarded. They've made a significant investment. They chose Bristol and want to be here. I think they have a strong desire to stay here for an extended period of time, and this is just one of the pieces of the puzzle in order to get that accomplished.
Well, I understand that. I want them here. I think everybody on this council and everybody in this city wants them here. Nobody is opposed to American Merchants coming in and opening their doors and putting our people to work. That is what this city has got to have if we're going to move forward as a city. But from day one on this A R C grant, American Merchant was fully aware that the city was not willing to take on the liability, and it was my understanding that they agreed to that. So we moved forward, and now we find ourselves today that we're being asked to take on 100% of that liability, and my proposal was to split it.
And I think it was a reasonable proposal, you know, but they chose, didn't choose, I don't think they, at this point, they have the ability to let go of that much cash at any one time, because they have demands that need to be met with other suppliers and with other vendors. And I think that's one of the issues that they're having right now. Not that it's a bad issue, but it's, it's a startup company, and when you start up, that's when your most, that's when a lot of your expenses are being incurred, and this is one piece of the puzzle that allows them to defray some of those startup costs.
I understand that. But if this is a $30 million deal, then that 250 that I suggested to be set aside is only 0.8 of 1%, not even 1%. And if it's a $250 million project, then it is 1%. That is not significant numbers that would hinder this facility from opening up, in my opinion. If they are running that tight, then to me, that's another red flag. And this council, I'm going to caution this council about any more debt obligations for this city. This council minus Mr. Osborne, a year ago, we had a proposal of a local investor that wanted to do a $20 million deal on a piece of property that we owned outright. He offered us half of what we thought the land was worth, and we shot him down. That was a zero risk for this city and the ability to capture a $20 million deal, and we shot him down. Just last week, we had a lifetime business, a lifetime resident in this city want to split a piece of land to help market it better. It was a no-brainer in my mind. He has spent his whole life in this city, and we shoot him down and send him off out the door. That is the kind of stuff that this council and this city needs to be doing to move this city forward, is working with our locals, investing in them that has invested in us, and we're shooting them down. And tonight, we're sitting here talking about a company coming in here, and we're going to go on the hook for 500 more thousand dollars on top of this $590? I'm okay with the $590, because the building will bring that any day of the week, but the 1.1, there's a possibility that it won't bring that kind of money, because our economy is not that strong and struggling in this whole entire region. We just had a half a million square foot mile sale for $1.26 million. We've got buildings setting everywhere, and we better be careful about how much money we're willing to put into a building, because we may not get our money back out of it. And these are my concerns, and I think they're legitimate concerns, and we all need to talk about it and think about it. Because just because that building sold for 1.9, three, four, six months, eight months, a year ago, does not mean that's what it's going to bring today. I mean, I'm all for American Merchant. We need them. We need every one of our buildings fired back up and our people back to work. But this city is in a, in a position that if we're not careful, if we don't take our time and look at every angle of what is the best-case scenario to navigate through all this stuff that comes before us, we're going to wake up in two and a half years, and we're not going to be able to write the check. We better slow down on this. I know that Monday, this area had a bomb go off with closing of a major, major plant. And I think we're rushing in on this, and we need to slow down. We need to look at all the options, and we need American Merchants to take on some of the liability risk on this bond, and that's my opinion.
Well, I mean, I'll just say, you know, to me, I know the city manager's worked very hard, tried to find a solution. I know he's worked with Mr. Cook, who's here as well, to try to find a solution. You know, when you deal with A R C and the federal government, you know, they, they have certain parameters that you've got to deal with, and that's one of them. I don't, you know, I think, in my mind, what we've done is, is tried to mitigate the risk. We've identified the risk. We tried to mitigate it through the bond, and not just us going out and getting a bond, but putting the additional amount in the deed of trust. And I don't have a problem with that. I think, you know, if you look at, and I don't like to bring up past councils and decisions years prior, but I think that's the kind of stuff that would have got us out of problems if they had done that before, at least put some kind of mechanism there so that when, when you go out and get these grants and the city's liable. And there's a difference between being liable for something and the debt. And really, the only thing that triggers this liability in the first place is two things, is if they don't do anything at all, in which case, then we, we would have the building and, I don't know what, you know, as you say, sell it for 1.1 million or not. I, I don't know enough about real estate to say if that's accurate, but I think, I think we would come very close to getting that back and putting something in there, or them not getting the 103 jobs in two and a half years. And again, any delays, I think, would, would make that instance of default more likely than not. So to me, the, the longer we delay, ups the chance, ups the risk. And, you know, right now, we need them to get up and running as quickly as possible for, for our workforce, for our community. So I'm fine with the deed of trust. I was, I would have been fine with it the other night, but, so in my mind, I appreciate the work from the city manager and the insurance to try to get this resolved. It's not been easy, and, but we need to move forward with this.
And I'll just kind of echo a little bit from, from both people. I do share some concern with the potential, you know, for more debt load that we would have. But I mean, really, at the end of the day, this is worst-case scenario, American Merchant does nothing. You know, they, they know they can create 103 jobs, and it's, it's a risk, but it's a risk that we probably need to take at the end of the day. And I feel like you all have done your due diligence, and the insurance company's done their due diligence, so I have no problem with this.
Anything else? All right, I guess it's my turn. Um, yeah, say. Is there something we need to note?
One, I want to continue to go forward with this matter, but I will update council. Mr. Cook has worked tirelessly. I cannot say enough about what he has done since June 7th to get this done. I think last night, we had a conversation at about 9:00 PM about this deal and how we were going to make it all come together. And he told me last night, I will work up until 6:14 tomorrow night to make sure that we have any option available for us. And it's 6:37, and he's just informed me that we do have another option available, where the city would not be on, would not be on the bond. We still have to work out the premium price with American Merchant and the bond company. I think we know what that, I think we know what that's going to be, but it appears at this point, the city would have no liability once we get that premium price worked out. And if that's the case, we, we owe a lot to Mr. Cook. I'll put it that way. But I would want to go ahead and get permission tonight, just in case something falls through between now and whenever we would get those documents signed with American Merchant. That way, if it did fall through, we could continue to move forward and not waste any more time.
We want to have him come up and kind of explain that in more detail so we can understand.
Sure, can do. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have. I did just receive a, a call. I've been working, an underwriter via a broker to obtain a bond in the name of American Merchant, obligating back to the city of Bristol. And as Randy just pointed out, I was, just received approval. She, my broker was trying to give me the details. All I heard was approval. And so I said, you text me the, rather email me the details, and we'll, we'll work through the, that. But we, bottom line is, it looks like we do have an approval. As he said, we will need to work through with American Merchant on the pricing part of it, but that, I think, I think they will be happy with what they hear.
What is the timeline? Now that you've got the approval, you'll have all the facts and figures by when?
Well, as soon as I get an email, I should have the...
I think what we're saying, could we call, could we call another quick special session tomorrow?
We can call another meeting.
Tomorrow at a convenient time for 30 minutes? Would you know by, in the afternoon, or?
Are you going to leave that at 1:00?
Yeah.
Be in tomorrow afternoon?
Yeah, up, anytime tomorrow, actually.
Okay. I have lots of time. Time's not my problem right now.
If you want to table this, that would be fine as well, till tomorrow afternoon. Is there a point what your schedule?
I mean, about this time would be good.
Okay, let's do that. Let's just table it. Sounds like something good is happening, so let's just let the due diligence happen a few hours in the mornings.
Well, John, I do have an issue. We have to have a 12-hour notice published, so I probably need to figure that out.
We can, I can do, I can do an official recess until tomorrow at 2:01 if you want.
A 12-hour notice?
For a special meeting, for a call date, you have to have 12 hours.
Well, if you call it out now, I mean, 24 hours, it'd be 6:40 tomorrow evening. So, am I misunderstanding that?
No, I'm just saying, you know, I want to choose a time right now so that I can get the notes out. Otherwise, if we choose, let's say noon tomorrow, the notes have to go out before midnight tomorrow.
Oh, you want to do it that early tomorrow? I'm, I'm fine with that. I'm, I'll make myself available.
Anytime's fine with us, so, sounds like, sounds like whenever you want to do it.
Are you available?
Like, later would be better, you know, just being honest, but.
What's the earliest you can meet?
Can you do it 1:00 afternoon?
Hold on, y'all. Yes, one works.
Okay, we'll do one, one pen.
You can do one.
Okay, so I'll just, I'll go ahead and send the notice out, 1:00 PM tomorrow.
Will Mr. Cook have the information by then?
I should, as a matter of fact. I will not be available tomorrow at 1:00, though, and I'm not so sure that I need to be, as long as we get it worked out through with American Merchant. I'm not so sure, unless you just want to be informed of what we're needing to do, because the city would not be...
Right. And I think what we can, if, once we get things worked out with American Merchant, I think we could even cancel the meeting if we need to, because any of this stuff here on the agenda would not have to happen.
Okay, so if he, if he gets this worked out, we don't even have to meet back?
Right.
Okay, I'll make a motion. We table.
Okay, got a motion to table?
Second.
Got a second, Mr. Osborne. Any discussion?
So we would meet if everything doesn't work out?
If something falls through between now and tomorrow, 1:00, we'll be meeting. Otherwise, I'll let you all know that the meeting's canceled.
I mean, that's, that's fine. I just didn't know where they'd be or not.
I'll let you know.
Okay.
It may be at 12:30, but I'll let you know.
Okay, so we got a motion, Mr. Wingard, to table. Second, Mr. Osborne, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes. I don't think there's any need right now, because we don't have all the information. Anything else on the agenda?
I need to table item two.
I'll make a motion. We table item two.
My second. Second.
All right, second, Mr. Hartley, table item two. Please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes. All right, Ms. Martin, if you want to come speak, you're happy to.
Do we need to, we signed up to speak.
Yeah, I've got you.
I can't hear.
I've got you.
You can come up to speak right now. Who signed up for what I did?
Well, I signed up for the, yeah, the petition.
Well, I did too, but I'm prepared to speak, and I expect to get that confirmation.
Well, I was going to say that, I'm fine.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Nancy Marney. I'm a resident of the city of Bristol, Virginia, and I'm a property owner. A $12 million investment is worthless in Bristol, Virginia. If it puts us deeper into a debt, we can't pay now. It's worthless. We don't need this. It is not worth it. It's a crapshoot. I can't imagine any business operating like this, no reputable business I've ever been associated with in any way, shape, or form would operate like this. This is elementary stuff. I've seen this scenario too many times in this city. It's the same thing. There are too many assumptions, too many ifs, maybes, well, it might, if it does. Come on, people. Be big boys. Be big boys. This is big money. We're in a city that owes one hell of a bill, and we can't pay it. And now, we have a bunch of people in here who are trying to drag us into the quagmire. Where's your backbone? I'm a citizen. I am a citizen and a property owner. Part of this is my money you're talking about, and I don't like it. Now, if we have to foreclose on them, I wouldn't foreclose. I'd just stay out of it. That property sat empty up there for years. It's worthless to us. We don't need that property. The city's loaded with stuff now we can't do anything with. Don't get into it. This deal was structured, agreed upon, and presented in January, and yet that is not at all what we're talking about tonight. They knew then what the city agreed to. Now, it's boomeranged, and it'll happen again, just like some other things. Mark my words, it will. I don't understand this at all. This should have been dismissed a long time ago. You have better things to do. If they don't have the money to build and run that place, get rid of it. We don't need them. We simply do not need them. This is their problem, not ours, friends. It's their problem, not ours. Now, let me reply to one thing Mr. Wingard said, that we have pretty much shut down a local citizen on selling some property, talking about the property up there. No, we haven't. What we did was try to get that cleaned up, get the questions asked now, cleaned up now, so that when that property is ready to be developed or rezoned, the city will not end up in court, because they knew this ahead of time and didn't do anything about it till it was too late.
Thank you, Ms. Marney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Pollard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Michael Pollard. I live at 101 Ashley Drive. I think my primary concern has now likely been resolved, but since the topic has now been brought up, I would like to go in and say, just in case that the issue winds up not being resolved after all. When American Merchant started on this process, they were fully prepared to pay themselves for the water treatment facility. If they're able to get a grant to pay for it or to help pay for it, then great, but the city shouldn't get involved with backing up that grant. If they're, if they have the ability to pay for the water treatment plant themselves, they should be able to back it up themselves as well. Fortunately, now with this modified bond arrangement, at least my understanding of it is, I might have some of the detail, the terminology incorrect. It sounds like they're now going to be able to pay a slightly higher premium to absolve the city of any risk, and that's the way it should have been in the first place. This is not the type of arrangement where the city should be backing up their ability to do something. And if they're willing to pay for it themselves, they should be able to pay for it themselves if the bond falls through. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, the council meeting is adjourned.